18, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Here. Our first order of business is the annual lights, sights, and holiday nights award winners. And Mr. Posada will be... Would you like to do the honors, please?
All right, here we go. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for having us out tonight. I'd like to introduce, helping me out tonight, will be the Chairman of the Recreation and Parks Commission, Greg Bertinet. Commissioner Bertinet, thanks for being out here today. We're going to talk a little bit about our awardees this year, but I want to give you a little bit of background. So every year, the Recom Parks Commission, for the last 22 years, which is kind of amazing, has went around the city, looked at locations that were nominated by neighbors to recognize individuals who've taken the time to decorate their homes for the holidays. Every year, it's a little bit harder to find enough people to go out and do the judging and then following up that than when getting the signs that we put out at each of the locations. So we encourage everybody in the community, when Christmas time comes around next year, to remember to send us the name of your neighbor or the address of your neighbor who is decorating their homes and you would like to get them recognized. The contest resulted this year in 30 nominations. The Recreation and Parks Commission, Commissioner Carey and Commissioner Bertinet, were the official judges. They went out on December the 13th. There's a map containing the five contest winners. There's one Neighborhood Spirit Award along with 10 recipients of what we call the Holiday Hall of Fame. And these are individuals in the community who have continuously, almost for those whole 22 years, have done decorating of their location. So somewhere in here in my pocket is the remote for the show. So let's see here. So we're going to start with the Best Decorated Rookie Residents. And some of our award winners are here. And if I call your name, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the front end, Commissioner Bertinet will present you with your plaque. If you aren't here, we're going to go ahead and get those delivered to them. So for the Rookie Residents 2018 winner, we have 437 East El Camino Colegio, the Golden Family. And I don't know if they're here. Are they here? All right, come on down. Thank you. Thank you. And they'll be getting a yard sign that we'll put out in front of their house, and they'll get to have that all holiday season long. Next is our Simply Christmas Award winner. And that's going to be 1937 Ibarra Avenue, the Ortega Family. Are the Ortegas here? Oh, we're sorry, they weren't making it. But we'll get them a yard sign. As you can see, they creatively decorated their little trailer there as part of the decorations. And that's a pretty unique way to use your front yard, I think. The Norman Rockwell Award winner, we tried to look for, again, in this case, Norman Rockwell, trying to get something that's very traditional and represents the holiday season. This year's winner, it's 520 Marriott Road, the Patterson Residents. I know the Pattersons are here. I saw them walking up. The fourth award winner is the Clark Griswold Award. For those of you who've seen the movie, you understand the connotation of the name. So let's look. So here we go. This is at 1947 Trinity Drive, the Nicholas Family. Are the Nicholas here? Come on up. Now work their way through the crowd. See, all these people showed up to see you get your award. Isn't that cool? It's outstanding. Thank you very much. Thanks for participating. Thank you. Okay, those are our official awards. I want to run through the rest of the slides real quickly, just kind of give you an idea of the other awards that we have. So we have the Neighborhood Spirit Award that went to Wailea Court, and that's over on the McCoy Lane section of town. So that was the Neighborhood Award. Our Hall of Fame winners, the Hindle Family on Cortez Drive, they go all out every year. The Melena Family on Lucas Drive, again, another family that's participated for many Jeremy Gomez Family. The Carcary Family over on Pam Court. And the Vea Family on South Palisades. Always, yes. They do a great job. And the Bernard Family on South Linda Drive. And the Coty Family on Granada Street. And the Cardona Family on Lassen. This one's really bright. The Ugarte Family on Butterfly Court. And Michael Clayton's office on East Orange. You know, Mr. Clayton's done it every year. He puts Santa out there, hands out candy to the kids in the neighborhood. He does an outstanding job every year, not just at this event, but particularly helping the community. So we want to thank him for that. And those are our award winners for this year. We want to thank the council for letting us bring them forward to you and recognize them just as they should be. And again, next year, we're looking for nominations every year, so let us know. There will be a map published with all the addresses, and it'll be available at the city website, so people can drive around Santa Maria and look at the lights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posada, and thank you to all those that decorate at Christmas time. I think I barely got my tree up about three days ago. So I'd like to know who the guy is that gets up on the roof, though. That's brave. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Retirement Resolution, and I will be making the presentation. Whereas with over 29 years of law experience, Gil Trejo has twice been a valuable member of the city's team from 1993 to 1995, and then from 2004 as its chief legal counselor. And whereas Gil and his team successfully defended San Maria Valley water rights for residents and businesses, helped with the transition to the district elections and the passage of Measure U 2012 and Measure U 2018, defended renters living in substandard conditions by prosecuting slum lords, and helped to facilitate the Enos Ranch Project, San Maria Freeway Center Development, and the Union Valley Parkway Project. And whereas Gil was an instrumental part of the acquisition of the building where the San Maria Police Department is currently located, the acquisition of Los Flores Ranch Park and Future Landfill, the acquisition of the property where the city's transit center is located, as well as the construction of the 14-screen Cineplex at the Town Center East, and two new fire stations, and the Santa Maria Public Library, in addition to helping facilitate repairs to the San Maria River levee and overseeing the dissolution of the city's redevelopment agency. And whereas during his tenure, Gil helped grow and improve the effectiveness and professionalism of the Code Compliance Division, which won a statewide award for its innovative walk-and-talk program. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows. Gilbert Gil Trejo is hereby recognized and commended for his dedicated service and valuable contributions to the San Maria community, and the City Council wishes him, his wife Liz, and his family well in their future endeavors when he retires on December 28, 2018. And I will make that as a motion.
Second.
It's been passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria this 18th day of December 2018. We'll call Rome. Oh. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll so we can make this official?
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, do you meet me at the podium? Look at that.
Well, this should only take about 15 minutes. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. First, let me start out by thanking my wife, Elizabeth, for 30 years of marriage and for her support throughout all my years here in Santa Maria. So thank you, Liz. It's been my pleasure and honor to serve as your legal representative over the years. I've had the opportunity to work with some fantastic department heads and city managers. So thank you, Jason. Thank you, Rick Hayden and Tim Ness. You have a great management team here. And finally, I'd be remiss if I did not thank my staff, my front office staff, my assistant city attorneys, both present and past, and my code enforcement staff. We have one of the best offices on the Central Coast, and I'm convinced of that. We've built a very good team across the street, and I'm leaving it in good hands. So with that, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Stillwell, would you like to make any comments?
Just briefly to expand on the resolution and what Gil just mentioned. So one thing the resolution doesn't say is all the other legal issues that Gil was able to tackle and address behind the scenes that didn't rise to the fore because of his superb legal counsel. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to manage the legal issues that a city faces, you know, all the way from personnel issues to things that happen out in the community that we need to be responsible for and address. So we calculated that Gil's had about over 300 city council meetings, and I've had the pleasure to see a number of city attorneys in action, and Gil's just great. He's superb. We're fortunate to have had him here, serving the community for the time he's been here. Also, with those 300 council meetings, you know, he's superb at saying a lot without saying much. We did go back and look over those 300 council meetings. If you take out the phrase "no reportable action," he said 372 words over those 20. So we thank you for your service, and congratulations. Good luck on your retirement.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Gil, I want to publicly thank you for your expertise that you have given this council in closed session and one-on-one. I truly respect you. I respect everything about you, even times when we sat together and wanted a situation to reveal it in a different way. You always gave it to me as black and white with no gray in it at all whatsoever, and you helped me understand issues on a very clear level. You've become a great friend. You've become a great advisor, and I truly respect you, and I want you and your wife, Liz, to have the best life ever, because that's what you have given to the City of Santa Maria and to this council and to this city as well. And I wish you well, and Godspeed with you.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you. And, you know, pretty much the same thing goes for everybody up here, Gil. You and I go back to when I was getting information from you while I was still with the police department, and that kind of counseling was also very meaningful to me as well, and we're going to miss you.
Dr. Mullins.
Gil, another council person told me that you're the guy that keeps us out of jail. So I'd like to thank you for my personal credit. I'm going to achieve the best in the future.
Ms. Boyson.
And Gil, I just look forward to both of us having more time on the bicycle out there on the road and look forward to it. But thank you very much for all of your wisdom and your guidance over the years. It has truly benefited all of us up here. Again, thank you very much. You will be sorely missed.
And as I've said before, I want to thank you for all of your guidance. You explained everything in a very clear manner. You gave us our options, and I usually didn't agree with you, but those were the options we had. You're really going to be Ms. Gil. We really appreciate everything you've done to help us. And you've been, you know, when I read this, you were really busy, all the stuff that we've been through. So you didn't say much, but you've been very busy. So I thank you very much.
Next, we have another retirement resolution, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I read the resolution, I want to mention to everyone in the audience how meaningful this is for me. Excuse me. Because 25 years ago, we sat in that room together where we have our closed council session meetings, and we sat through an old board together where we hired Steve. So it's not really very often we're going to get a council person that is here for the beginning and part of the program at the end. So it's truly my pleasure, my honor. Whereas Sergeant Stephen Lopez has been employed by and faithfully served the City of Santa Maria since August 9, 1993. And whereas Sergeant Stephen Lopez's service has been with distinction and of the highest quality. And whereas Sergeant Stephen Lopez has been committed to the philosophy of community-based policing and the ethical treating of all persons with dignity and respect. And whereas Sergeant Stephen Lopez has provided the residents and businesses in the community with extraordinary professional law enforcement and service and great compassion. And whereas Sergeant Stephen Lopez, through his dedication, loyalty, and devotion to the duty, has contributed measurably to the quality of life that residents, businesses, and visitors enjoy in the City of Santa Maria. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, Sergeant Stephen Lopez is commended for his faithful distinction, distinguished and devoted service to the community, is congratulated on his retirement, and the city wishes him and his family continued good health and many years of happiness. Passed and adopted at the regular meeting for the Santa Maria City Council on the 18th day of December 2018. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second. So I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution honoring Steve Lopez for his years of service. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to try not to get too emotional. Madam Mayor, city councilmen, city managers, chiefs, look at the picture up there. I can't believe it's been 25 years. Yeah, that's a '70s mustache right there, I think. Maybe '80s, I'm not sure. But I went to the academy with my brother, and I went through, sponsored with the city, and he went through independent, and then he got picked up a month and a half after. And so I've had a great partner in my brother.
How neat.
I've had the good fortune of also working with my cousins at the police department. I've made so many family friends through so many different departments at the city, and I'm so happy that so many people are here to join with me in this. Thank you to my wife. I think our police families, they also serve with us, so thank you for putting up with all of the shift changes and all of my crazy schedules. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to serve this community. It's been such an honor to serve with the brave people of the police department, the fire department, and all the first responders with American Medical Response. These people go to dangerous situations every single day, and I just want to remind the people of Santa Maria that you have the best of the best working for you. Thank you very much.
Steve, you sat down too soon. I want to thank you for putting everything on the line for the City of Santa Maria. I want to thank your wife. I want to thank your family and the rest of your brothers that have done the same. You are the one that is to be honored tonight, and for those 25 years of service, I thank you so very much for all that you have done to protect the City of Santa Maria. Thank you.
And you know, if you grow the mustache back, you'll look the same as you did when you first came here. So thank you very much, Steve. As Ms. Waterfield put it, thank you for putting your life on the line every single day that you went to work. And that's really tough on a family. Thank you. Chief Hanson, I wasn't going to forget you.
I can get right over there. Yes, I feel like we're sitting around here, and I'd like everybody to take a good look at me here.
You broke that. You've got to use the other. Sorry.
I could use my big voice.
We had to give Jack a bonus, so we cut off on the mics.
Okay. I want you to take a quick look at Steve there. I'm glad he's here in uniform tonight because he's a model of professionalism. I say a picture's worth 1,000 words, and I think that's the case with Steve here. He is always squared away in his appearance. He's always squared away in his grooming. He's always squared away in his work product. And he was one of the first sergeants promoted by Chief Martin when Chief Martin came here. And Steve has just done a phenomenal job for us as a sergeant. And he works, he mentioned the shift work. He's worked graveyard shift in the last five and a half years that I've been here, and he's out there taking care of those young men and women in the middle of the night for us, and it makes me sleep a lot better knowing I've got guys like Steve out there taking care of them. So Steve, thank you so very much. He was a, as an officer, he was a, besides being a patrolman, he was a gang enforcement officer for many years and a beat coordinator. He's been in charge of our honor guard that you see time and time again at events that do a fabulous job. And he is a contributor, and that's what you want to be known as when you leave this job as a contributor, and Steve is definitely one. So Steve, thank you very much for everything you've done.
The next item is the certification of the election. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title and give the staff report?
The City Council will adopt a resolution reciting the fact of the general municipal election held November 6, 2018, in conjunction with the statewide general election, and accepting the county clerk recorder's certificate of results of the official canvas and follow standard procedures to reorganize the city council. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, on November 6, the City of Santa Maria held its first by-district general municipal election, electing one member of the city council in each of the newly formed District 3 and District 4. Additionally, the city council put forth a measure before the voters known as Measure U 2018, Public Safety Essential Services. This election was consolidated with the statewide general election conducted by the County of Santa Barbara. The county clerk recorder had 30 days following the election to complete the ballot count and certify the results. The results were certified on December 6 and received by the city clerk's office via email. The certified election results confirm that Gloria Soto was elected to the city council in the newly formed District 3 to serve a four-year term, and Eda Waterfield was re-elected to the city council to serve in the newly formed District 4 for a four-year term. The certified election results also confirms that there was a resounding support for the Public Safety Essential Services measure, with 74% of the city's voters voting yes. The city council must adopt a resolution accepting the city clerk's certification of the election prior to the installation of the newly elected officers. The resolution is before the city council this evening for approval. This concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution reciting and accepting the official election results. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye.
With that, we will begin the process of reorganizing the city council. But first, I'd like to read a proclamation presenting to our outgoing council member Boyson, thanking him for his eight years on the city council. I was going to give this to you to read, but I thought it'd be appropriate for me to do that, Jack. Whereas Jack Boyson has been a valuable member of the city team from 2010 to 2018 as a city council member, and whereas he brought skilled financial experience in government business to a city elected position, carefully reviewing each budget document and supported the need for additional local sales tax revenues through both Measure U efforts. And whereas among his many achievements were supporting the new police headquarters and new fire stations, renovations to Oakley and Buena Vista Parks, and with fellow council members supporting numerous nonprofit agencies with CDBG funding. And whereas he represented the city very well as his appointee to the Central Coast Water Authority, where he served as chair since 2014. And whereas Jack will retire on December 18, 2018, and the Santa Maria City Council wishes to recognize him for his lasting contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize Jack Boyson and commend him for his dedicated service and valuable contributions to the Santa Maria City community, and the city council wishes him, his wife Kathy, and his family well in their future endeavors.
Thank you, Mayor. My fellow council members for the proclamation. As most of you know, I usually don't say very much in oral reports on a given Tuesday, so I may spend a little extra time here if I can. It has truly been my pleasure to serve the citizens of the City of Santa Maria this past eight years. Thank you to the entire staff of the city, what great employees we have. I would hire every employee that I've come in contact with in my own business. You really make our job easy, and you make us look good up here, so thank you for that. It's bittersweet that I enter this next phase of my life. Kathy and I will be spending a lot more time in Southern California with the grandkids, and I personally will try and get a few more miles on my bike and attempt to get my golf handicap down to where I know I'm capable of. Thank you to the community for placing your trust in me, to my family for supporting me, and all the individuals who walked precincts and supported my efforts. Special thanks go out to Connie and Fred Quigley and Daniel Boccezi. I couldn't have done it without you. To my wife of 45 years, Kathy, you are absolutely amazing. I can't believe you have put up with all my career choices. Congratulations to Gloria Soto, who will fill this seat next. You ran a great campaign. You are joining a great and caring council. Learn from them. I know I have. Back in 2002, I was complaining to the then-supervisor-elect Joe Centeno about the red tape and lengthy process of the county planning and development department. He asked me if I wanted to do something about... He asked me if I wanted to do something about it, and appointed me to the County Planning Commission. Little did I know that that would be the start of a decade and a half of public service. I've learned a lot in the last 15 years. Most of all, I've learned that public service is more than making budgetary decisions and providing essential services. It's about charting the future and laying a foundation that will enrich the lives of the community we serve for decades to come. It's about being conservative with the taxpayers' money, but remembering that we are here to provide services and not necessarily to stockpile cash. Thank you to the voters of the city for entrusting us to spend wisely the new monies the city will receive from Measure U. Those funds will allow us to continue to provide the best public safety services in the state. To this end, I would ask that the new council consider setting up a rainy day fund from proceeds of Measure U to ensure that our most vital services will not be cut when they're needed most. And here are a few more of my wishes for the new council. Continue to be aware of our long-term water supplies, both by importing supplemental water and protecting our ground basin. Important decisions will be made in the very near future. I would ask that the council consider all of the potential alternatives, including purchasing of new supplemental state water, partnering with the County of Santa Barbara and other agencies in a regional desalinization plant, and/or a state-of-the-art water treatment facility. Continue to do all we can to provide affordable housing and enhance our relationship with providers like People Self-Help, and the County Housing Authority, and Good Samaritan Shelter and others. Encourage more developments like the residence at Depot Street, Rancho Hermosa, and Ted's and H Gardens. Continue to emphasize services to the neediest of the needy among us. Do all we can to reduce homelessness in our community. It is beyond me that in a country of 300 million people, the richest country in the world, I might add, that we cannot house 600,000 most vulnerable homeless in our nation. We have to do our part. Continue to be aware and make the tough decisions that will ensure the integrity of our single-family neighborhoods. H-2A housing in the city is a simple fix. Anytime you have more than six unrelated individuals in a residence, it is a boarding house and needs to comply with the rules and regulations established for their use. Landlords need to be held responsible for maintaining property that will not degrade the neighborhoods. To this end, require landlords to be treated just like any other business enterprise. They should be required to have a business license for each location and adhere to similar standards of commercial businesses, including health and safety, as well as landscaping requirements. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the importance of improving bike path infrastructure and throughout the city, and of course, keeping the downtown specific plan moving. Finally, remember that the city cannot do it all. Continue to nurture and cultivate our great partnerships with nonprofits in the community. We have so many that will multiply the effect of our investment in them. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. I hope that in some small way, I've left the city a little better place than it was when I was here eight years ago. Thank you very much. And why do I get cardboard when these guys get a frame?
I would like to make a comment. We each come here with a different background and different perspectives and different experiences in our life. And I know, Jack, I think with you working with the homeless, I think you've brought that perspective to us and have educated us on the council. And when you extend invitations to go to the Good Samaritan Shelter, and the point and count, which we'll be involved with, count, point and count, point and time count, okay, we'll be involved with in January, all those things are important to us. So what you've brought, and a different look at the budget that you have brought to us coming from the private sector has been very important. Your involvement in the development community and decisions on that, that none of us had that perspective. Your financial background in itself brings a different perspective than what many of us have had here. But I think, you know, I think what's really important, that people of Santa Maria don't know, how important your position was on CCWA, which is Central Coast Water Authority. That is so important that we continue, and you've brought us right to the edge where we're almost going to get that supplemental water, Table A water. And the people, I know the people of Santa Maria don't realize how much time you've spent, the meetings you've gone to, the trips to Sacramento. But I for one, thank you very much, because that has been so important to the city of Santa Maria.
And you have made a difference. You have made a difference.
Jack, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you for the last four years. You have brought such pragmatic solutions to a lot of things that we had to discuss, not only here on the dais, but in closed session. And I truly thank you for that. I respect you, and I wish you and Kathy the best life ever.
Jack, every time I turn the spigot on my faucet or flush the toilet, I think of you. Because I know it's through your expertise that Santa Maria Valley is going to have adequate supply of water to fill my tank.
Jack, there's just too many things to thank you for. Excuse me, Dr. Moats.
I'd like to reiterate what the mayor said about how good it is to have somebody with financial expertise on the council. We know that you are a chief financial officer of a nonprofit, and you ran your own business. So you're someone who knows how to read a profit and loss statement, and you know about spreadsheets. And I think you've done a great job for the city. We're in better financial shape for having you on. And also, of course, you know, we live next door to each other almost. You know, I jog by your house almost every day. Some days, you're there. And we've had some discussions on your front lawn. And I've looked in admiration at your white Tesla. And I know that you're a conscientious consumer of electric energy, and you're trying to conserve things for us. And I've also seen your beautiful bicycle. And I've never seen you ride it slowly. And you always look like you're going on the Tour de France. So it's been great working with you. Best wishes in your future.
Mr. Cordero, now you can.
I think it's just kind of been kind of like this, you know, it's been okay. You've been a great friend. Thank you so much for those 5:30, 6:30 in the evening phone calls when I've called you up and asked for some advice and some things. And like we said earlier, you're going to be sorely missed, and appreciated learning from you.
Thank you. You can be excused. Yes, you can be excused. So, I'd, okay. So, I'd like to call for a brief recess as Councilmember Boyson leaves the dais, and then we will come back for the swearing-in. Thank you.
When can I get the cookies?
Okay, I would like to reconvene the meeting and continue with the installation of elected officers and the reorganization of the city council by having our deputy, Chief Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Garrett, administer the oaths of office. Councilmember Waterfield was re-elected to the new council District 4. Ms. Waterfield, could you please step down to take your oath?
Yes, and before I do, I would like to call my husband. Last time I took my oath, I used my Bible. I'm going to do the same this year.
Okay.
Raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, that I will support and defend, that I will support and defend, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion, or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully, discharge the duties, discharge the duties, upon which I am about to enter, upon which I am about to enter, so help me God, so help me God, the Father, Son, and Spirit. Thank you. I am so grateful to the city of Santa Maria. You have placed your trust in me. You have given me a second opportunity to represent the entire city of Santa Maria. This is a job I do not take lightly. I've always had the best for the entire city, though at times there have been very hard decisions to make. And I know there's going to be in future very hard decisions to make. But I will continue to do my best. I want to thank my opponent, Mr. Gutierrez, who I see you, you had me running a good race, and I appreciate that. That speaks very highly and well of you in regards to what you want to do for the city of Santa Maria. I just want to say thank you to everybody, but most of all, I want to say thank you to my campaign team, to my supporters that contributed to my campaign. I would not be here without any of you. But most importantly, to my husband Buck Waterfield, who has stood beside me every moment of the way. He's been my encourager, my supporter. But not only that, he's given me so much confidence in a job that I thought was way above my pay scale. But he gave me the confidence that this was something that I could do. I came to Santa Maria 33 years ago, and I gave him one year when we left Arizona. I said, "If I'm not happy, within one year, we're heading back to Arizona." Well, 33 years later, I haven't even looked back. Santa Maria is my home. I've met incredible people, incredible mentors here. A lot of my mentors are in the audience right now, and I want to thank you so very much. But most importantly, I've had great spiritual mentors with pastors and with friends, and just with great people that, you know, taught me that this is the real word, and this is what we truly need to understand when we sit in a place up here because of the decisions that we make. And I just want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for giving me the opportunity, but most importantly, for placing this career in my life, something that I never thought I could ever do or ever thought I ever wanted to do. It was because of Him that I'm here, and I just want to acknowledge that to not only my colleagues on the dais, but to everybody out there. And I just want to say thank you so very much, and I hope each and every one of you have a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
And now, Chief Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Garrett, will administer the oath of office to newly elected councilmember, Ms. Gloria Soto, who was elected to the new third council district. Ms. Soto, could you please come forward to take your oath?
Will you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear, that I will support and defend, that I will support and defend, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion, or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully, discharge the duties, discharge the duties, upon which I am about to enter, upon which I'm about to enter, so help me God, so help me God. so help me God.
Mayor, mayor?
Yes.
Well, what does it say when your first official act on the council is to create two disturbances in the chamber?
Okay, so, would you like to make any comments?
I would.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. First and foremost, I'd like to thank outgoing council member, Jack Boyson, and retiring city, city attorney Gil Trujillo, for their service to Santa Maria. Mr. Boyson and Mr. Trujillo, Santa Maria will forever be indebted to you both. Thank you for all you've done for the city of Santa Maria. I'd also like to thank my parents. Everything that I am is because of them, and the many sacrifices they've made to give me the opportunity at a better life. They taught me the importance of being of service and of giving back. Mami, papi, aunque no pudieron acompañarme esta noche, los amo. Gracias por todo el amor y apoyo que me han rindado. To my beautiful niece and nephew, Lucy and Richard, who are part of Santa Maria's bright, bright future, los adoro y siempre los llevo dentro de mi corazón. Todo lo que hago es para sus futuros. This election was one for the history books. For the first time, Santa Maria, Santa Marians had the chance to elect council members by district, giving me the opportunity to engage with voters in a way that would not have been possible in a citywide election. During the campaign, we heard people's stories, struggles, and visions for Santa Maria. We were able to communicate with constituents who hadn't been spoken to. We listened to their concerns, which can't be addressed until they are heard. And most importantly, we reminded people that their voices and their votes are powerful and that they can make a difference. In this November, San Marians made their voices heard, whether it was by volunteering, donating, or voting. They made it clear that they were ready for change. They were ready for a more inclusive city government, one that will truly listen to the needs of all its people. To the volunteers who worked tirelessly on that campaign, to the donors who invested in Santa Maria's future, to the youth who made this campaign their campaign, and to the voters and residents in District Three who entrusted me with their voice, thank you. I promise to stay grounded and connected to the many needs of our communities during these next four years, and to never forget who elected me to this position. Just because the election is over doesn't mean the work has ended. Please continue to stay engaged, to stay informed, to ask questions, and above all else, hold us accountable. With that, with that said, now the real work begins. I will work for transparency by making our city government an institution that asks, that listens, that learns, and then leads. I look forward to working alongside my fellow council members and mayor, our city staff, on issues that matter most, including affordable housing, living with jobs, expanding opportunities for Santa Maria, for Santa Maria's youth, and of course, bringing back San Marias' old barbecue down in Brooklyn. I'm glad I'm here, thank you. Thank you.
With that, I would like to call a brief fifteen-minute recess. There are, there's cookies and punch up here, and I think we have coffee over there. So, please help yourself to refreshments, and we will recess for about fifteen minutes. Thank you.
She can, she can have some coffee with us. Take, take my phone, diet, because I was really...
Comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Directions to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the city council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, we have nine requests to submit this time. Nine, okay. So you can set this timer for three minutes. Okay, Elvia Salazar?
Elvia Salazar. Sarah McDonald. Followed by Virginia Souza.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elvia Salazar.
Great, you're Elvia Salazar.
Y quiero contarles un poquito sobre mi experiencia siendo voluntaria en la campaña de Gloria Soto.
I want to share a little bit about my experience working on Gloria Soto's campaign.
Fue para mí una experiencia muy bonita y fue una gran oportunidad de poder hablar a la comunidad de la importancia de tener a una persona en el concilio que sabe de las necesidades de su comunidad.
It was a really beautiful experience and really it was an opportunity to get to talk to people about the importance of having representation on the city council. And, and having someone who understands our needs.
Sabemos que va a ser una voz fuerte para nuestra comunidad. Sabemos que va a poder apoyarnos y sabemos que tenemos un gran apoyo en Gloria Soto.
Uh, we know that she's going to be a, a great voice for our community. We know that she'll be a strong support for us and that she's going to, to look out for us.
Gloria Soto, hoy soy la voz de tu comunidad. Diciéndote felicidades, estamos orgullosos de ti y tu comunidad te apoya. Gracias.
Gloria, you're going to be such a great voice for our community. Here, you know, speaking on behalf of the community, we thank you so much. You're, you're going to do great. Thank you.
Sarah McDonald, followed by Virginia Souza, followed by Esther Jensen.
Good evening, Councilman, Councilperson Soto. Welcome. I'm Sarah McDonald and I am on the League of Women Voters Observer Corps and I am here to observe tonight. Well, welcome.
Virginia Souza, followed by Esther Jensen, followed by Susan Parmally.
Um, Madam Mayor and City Councilpeople, on behalf of Buena Vista Beautifiers, a grassroots committee formed in November of 2013 to assist the Recreation and Parts Department maintaining and enhancing Buena Vista Park while honoring the historic features of the park, I would like to welcome enthusiastically the youngest city councilwoman in San Maria history, Gloria Soto, as the first District Three Councilperson covering Buena Vista Park, the city's oldest park. So the youngest is, and the oldest. Welcome, Gloria.
Esther Jensen, followed by Susan Parmally, followed by Randy Houston.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Patino and Councilmembers. My name is Esther Jensen. I live in the La Maria Mobile Home Park and am representing the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team. I'm here to congratulate Etta Waterfield on her reelection in Gloria, her newly elected member. Both individuals were endorsed by our Nesbit group. We look forward early in the new year to get enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria on the council agenda. Let's make it work in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Parmally, followed by Randy Houston, followed by Willie Mueller.
I'm gonna feel like an odd man out here, but I will say congratulations both to Gloria and Etta. But I'm here, in 2013, I moved to Santa Maria at Casa, uh, Casa Del Rio Mobile Home Park. And one thing we moved there was we had these beautiful, huge, you look, you look, you look, well, you look, whatever tree. Okay? And, but unfortunately with those trees came turkey vultures. Turkey vultures leave a huge humongous mess. Besides what most people do, they also have what we call regurgitation, which is yucky. Brings maggots if it's not cleaned up. We had worked for decades trying to get this cleaned up. And this is for Jack Boyson, who is not here, so I feel really bad that I didn't get here faster to tell him this. He came in, actually had the girls to come in to one of our means of listen to us, and that's one of the things he says, anything I can help you with, please contact me. I got on the, on the computer right away and he responded and because of him, after decades of trying to get this mess cleaned up, we were able to get it finally in some kind of schedule where all this, what we call health and safety matters cleaned up, it's done on a regular basis. And we at Casa Del Rio wanted to say, thank you so much. Everybody complains all the time, what people don't do, I want to let you guys know, yes, we do know that you do things and we really appreciate it. And thank you, Jack, wherever you are. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Houston, followed by Willie Mueller.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I have two topics to bring up. One is putting up cameras at intersections. I see more than enough cars running red lights. Just coming over here, coming down Broadway onto Cook, I was at the light and someone ran a red light. And I'm just afraid it's gonna be a fatal car accident. I'm more afraid getting hit by a red light, I mean, person running a red light than I was when I was, when I was in Iraq. And the other one, I seen on Facebook, someone posted, they should have a Santa Barbara Valley Annual Tri-tip Festival at the Santa Barbara Grounds. That'd be good. Something famous for Santa Maria. Have like a tri-tip festival?
Yep.
That'd be good to go.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Willie Mueller, followed by Lupita Rios.
Madam Mayor and Councilman, I wanna, I have a problem. I am a condo owner. I'm on the board at Rancho Maria Gardens, down on Archer Street, East Archer. We have a homeless problem. They're coming in, they're camping in the carports, they're taking over the storage units and storing their items in it. I have talked to the police, they told me to come here and voice my concern. About two weeks ago, I was in the condo carports and one of the renters said that the homeless had, uh, whatever, um, told them that if they took their stuff out of our storage unit, that they would slash their tires. This is a big concern and hopefully more of the owners will come and voice their concern. So I would like to know what can be done.
Okay, I see Chief Hanson's making notes there, so he will take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us know. Lupita Rios, followed by David Dennis.
Good afternoon. My name is Lupita Rios and I'm here on behalf of a lot of the young people in Santa Maria and this community. I just want to talk a little bit about my experience volunteering for Gloria Soto's campaign as well. And I just want to say that I'm really excited to see, um, all the doors that are gonna open for the community and I really hope that we can build a stronger bridge between the young people and the people that serve us. Um, so, thank you. And I also just want to say that this campaign was a special one for me and for a lot of the community because we saw the passion and the dedication that, um, is, you know, that we're capable of. And I know that Gloria will do an amazing job as a city council member and so I just want to congratulate her and wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. David Dennis.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is David Dennis. I live at 416 East Hermosa, here in Santa Maria. And I'd like to speak about the district elections and some other impact. I know that the city council did not, uh, pursue that path. That was not something that you were looking forward to in many cases. And I think the concern that individual council members may not be inclined to represent the interests of the city at large had a role in that. However, I was able to attend the candidate forum that the League of Women Voters hosted for the first district elections and I saw four candidates that all expressed a strong desire to have Santa Maria thrive and be a good place to live for all of our residents. Uh, there were certainly differences in opinions and in priorities on how you accomplish that. Yet, the one thing that was common is that all four of the candidates there showed a sincere desire to serve the entire city and that was a very positive thing. Additionally, as we saw from the results, the district elections improved turnout and activated many voters that have sat on the sidelines in the past. This kind of interest and participation in our city governance is a good indication of the value of local representation. In District Three, we saw candidate Gloria Soto reach out to neighbors that had never been contacted by a political campaign in the past. They were able to meet an energetic, hardworking, young person that reflected the hopes and dreams that many of them have for their families and themselves. She reflected the average age of our city residents at 29 and had a similar background to those in the surrounding neighborhoods. In doing so, she earned the largest number of votes ever to come from these precincts within that district and raised tremendous financial support from those that wished to see the hope of her campaign turn into progress for our entire city. We all know that the efforts that have been made to represent all parts of town in the past, yet often only those that live, work, or travel the exact same streets can know all of the little details and issues that should be brought to the table here at the city council. And that's all district elections really hope to do, is bring a voice to the table. Not make the decisions, that's the job of all of you. By personalizing government just a little bit more by knowing your city council member, district elections can help many of us to know that person, to feel comfortable speaking to them, and to speak to all our elected officials eventually with more ease. This will give us all a chance to make our voice better heard so that our government can strive to be just a little more perfect. That's the hope of district elections and I hope that Gloria carries that forward, as does Ms. Waterfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that, that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, any comments?
Sure, a couple, real quickly, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So we, regarding Mr. Houston's comment about running red lights, we did hear that as a concern during the Measure U outreach and we will be bringing back for the council's consideration, Measure U funding for red light enforcement, traffic enforcement generally. We do see that as a concern. We've heard from others in the community that it's a concern. And we will follow up, as you indicated, with Chief Hanson on, uh, the Rancho Mobile Home homeless problem, the issues they're having there, and, uh, we'll work with them to address those.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, and I know years ago we had cameras and they were very effective. Has the law just said that we can't use cameras anymore, basically in California?
They more uphold it than... Yeah.
Okay. I was, okay, let me tell you what happened. I was, I was going north on Broadway, I was stopped at a red light, the car came up on my right side, ran the red light, went around, obviously went around me like this, down the street, there was another red light there, and there was a truck stop there. He went around the truck and ran that red light. It was really obvious that this person, male or female, was running a red light. And it just seems like, that's not just like the person who's thinking, okay, I'm gonna get through it really quick or, you know, we're in a hurry or something. But we can't use cameras for, for anything anymore? Okay, I've got the answer. No? Okay.
Just as an FYI, that microphone now is working in that corner.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Stillwell? Okay, very good. So, moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call motion with one vote, uh, with, I'm sorry, with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Okay. Here, oh, yes. Yes. Okay. So, so we need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would like to, uh, make a motion for the consent calendar excluding item 3B.
Okay. A move and a second, um, to approve the consent calendar with exclusion of 3B. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Madam Mayor of Tina?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I would like to approve the consent calendar, item 3B, for the minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 4th, 2018.
Second.
There's a, a motion and a second to approve 3B. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto? And Madam Mayor of Tina?
Aye.
Next item is regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will entertain nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem for the, for a one-year period.
Staff report is to be made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. Historically, the assignment of Mayor Pro Tem has been periodically rotated amongst council members on an annual basis each calendar year. There are no formal rules, policies, or procedures as to how the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem is made. The municipal code is silent in this regard. The only guidance comes from the California Government Code, state law. And the state law states the city council shall meet on the Tuesday after the general municipal election and choose one of its number as mayor for those cities that don't directly elect the mayor, and one of its numbers, Mayor Pro Tem. The duties of Mayor Pro Tem include acting on behalf of the mayor and the mayor's absence. The Mayor Pro Tem presides, presides at council meetings when the mayor is absent. The Mayor Pro Tem also fills in for the mayor at various community functions and meetings when the mayor is unavailable. The state law also says the mayor shall preside at the meetings of the city council. If she is absent or unable to act, the Mayor Pro Tem shall serve until the mayor returns or is able to act. The Mayor Pro Tem has all the powers and duties of the mayor. On December 19, 2017, Mayor Patino nominated and the city council ratified Councilmember Waterfield to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for calendar year 2018. It's now time for the mayor to consider nominating a council member to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for calendar year 2019. And after Mayor Patino makes her nomination, a majority of the city council will be required to ratify the appointment. And that concludes my staff report.
And you forget, you forgot to mention the Ben Hayes Show on Tuesday morning.
Yes, you have to do the Ben Hayes Show.
At eight o'clock.
That's right.
Okay, I would like to... I would like to nominate Councilmember Moats. Do I have a second?
You have a second, yes.
Okay, a nomination and a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor of Tina?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Councilmember Moats?
Well, I suppose I have to abstain, don't I?
But you can vote.
Can I vote for myself?
You can vote for yourself.
Well, absolutely.
The next, the next item is another business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title? Okay, well, just the, it's, report, City Manager.
Thank you again, Mayor Patino, members of the council. The report, uh, tonight is, um, on upcoming council agenda items. For, so the council's approval tonight of canceling, the council's action tonight on the consent agenda, consent agenda, sorry, canceled the meeting of January 1, 2019. So the next meeting of the city council will be January 15th. The regular business items we have are the, um, annual January board appointments and appointments of council representatives outside boards. We also plan to have an update on fireworks and the community outreach we did, uh, regarding the fireworks issues in Santa Maria around the holidays. Uh, we'll also, we also anticipate bringing forward a public hearing for the downtown streetscape plan. And we also have two retirement resolutions for Teresa Rayburn and Jim Davis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So next we'll hear item oral reports of council members. Why don't we start with you, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 5, I attended the Home for Good funding event down in, down in Beelton. And later that day, I attended the retirement party at the Menami Center for Mr. Khan. On December 6, I was at the open house for VTC. On the 10th, I was at the police swearing in and the commander did a great job because the chief was gone. And on the 11th, I attended a surprise birthday party, excuse me, surprise retirement party for Teresa Rayburn. And on the 12th, I had a very interesting meeting and dinner meeting with, what I learned now is the head public relations outreach person for the new mall owners. And it was just a real nice time meeting him. I think he's going to have some real good ideas to bring forward here with the city and the new mall structure. And on the 14th, I had the honor of being the only, only one of the seven Elk members to officiate over Ike Seamus's passing. And it was clearly one of the larger memorials that I've ever officiated over at the Elks or ever seen take place at the Elks. And that would be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Was the parade of lights within the last two weeks, or should I have said that last time?
You should have said that last time.
Oh.
You can, you've already said it again, so that's fine.
Well, in that case, I went to the Humane Society lunch on Thursday, December 6, at the Radisson. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor, on Wednesday, December 5, I did the Ben Hayes Show, morning show. Then headed down to the San Yanis Valley for Home for Goods, came back for the retirement party honoring Mr. Khan. December 6, I attended a Laughco meeting afterwards. No, I did not attend that. On Friday, December 7, I attended Salute to the Veterans Luncheon, which was very good. It was just honoring all our vets and it's, the chamber, or I should say, Bob Hatch and Dave Cross had started this years ago honoring our veterans and they still continue to do a great job of honoring those who have just stood in the line of fire for us. On December, Sunday, December 9, I attended the League of Women Voters Christmas Party. And then afterwards, I participated in a celebrity scooping event over at Doc Bernstein's. On Monday, December 10, I attended the police officer swearing in. And was he a, he was an engineer, right, that decided to become a police officer?
He just graduated from Cal Poly.
Yes, and so, yep, from the engineering, graduated from Cal Poly and decided, nope, he wasn't going to do that. He wanted to be a police officer. I think he wanted more action than, than anything. On Tuesday, December 11, I took a tour and had a lunch at Victory Outreach. And Victory Outreach is an amazing program that helps young men who are addicted to, whether it be drugs or alcohol, and it gets them through the process of becoming clean. It's a Christian-based organization and it's absolutely an amazing program that they go through, very successful. I got to meet a lot of young men that were just so incredibly great that they came there. And I think that was it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
On Friday, December 7, I attended the 17th Annual Freedom Monument Veterans Memorial Event, a tribute to veterans who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our country. On Sunday, December 9, I attended the League of Women Voters Annual Christmas Brunch. And on Thursday, December 13, I attended the Cause Action Fund Holiday Christmas Celebration. On Friday, December 14, I attended the UDW Annual Holiday Christmas gathering.
Thank you. On December 6, I attended the funders collaborative meeting in San Yanis for Home for Good. Later at noon, the retirement celebration honoring Steve Khan at the Menami Center. Later that afternoon, met with our lobbyists from Washington DC to talk about what's going on in DC and then attended the planning commission meeting that evening. December 6, I spoke at four government classes in the morning at Ragetti High School and they start at 7:30 in Lamore. I attended the guests at the Humane Heroes Luncheon at the Radisson. I went to the VTC Enterprise Open House at the Street Cafe. And if you haven't been there, to the A Street Cafe, go out there. It's, it's really nice. And I hadn't been out there in years, but it's great. You go out there for breakfast or lunch. The community fireworks meeting at Elwin Muscle Senior Center. December 7, I was present at the Freedom Monument Veterans Memorial Ceremony at the Abel Maltinato Center. And the weather was just gorgeous. I think it had just rained that night and then it was very, very warm that day. December 9, the League of Women Voters Christmas Party. And I also participated as a celebrity scooper at Doc Bernstein's for St. Baldric's. So we learned how to scoop ice cream. And I've been doing it wrong for years. December 10, we met with a teen advisory group at Pioneer High School for the Mayor's Task Force and went to the police officer swearing in that's at the Santa Maria Police Department. December 11, did a tour and lunch at Victory Outreach Men's Home, which, as Ms. Waterfield said, it's, I didn't realize how much they were doing there. I know they do a great job and they have a great reputation in town, but I didn't know exactly what they were doing and how much they did there.
It's national.
What?
It's national.
Oh, it's national? Yeah. I didn't realize that either. That evening, went to Teresa Rayburn's retirement celebration. And December 12, met with the people from Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, and they will be here. I asked them for a date and they just, they did not commit to any, any date, but probably around in February. Met with Peter Adams discussing state water and the contract assignment. Went to the, the board, joint board holiday dinner for dignity health. And December 14, and I want to say Ike Seamus's funeral, which was held at the Elks Club and as usual, the Elks do a wonderful job. But here is a man who was involved so much in our community. He was a business person, he was an athlete, he was involved in all kinds of things, especially with kids. He really, really, all those Seamus brothers did that, I guess. Butch Seamus did that, but Ike was really involved. And then he was really very well noted for putting together a barbecue team and going all over the country barbecuing.
One more on Ike, please. He actually head up the barbecue crew that went to Washington DC during the time that, no, Reagan.
Reagan, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
And he was also on the team that did it at Reagan's Ranch over here in West Comus Sierra. As the secretary over there at the Elks, I was the only officer there many times. And the phone calls would come in and invariably they'd end up at my desk. And I always, I started to learn how this was coming about. And they're, they're asking about the great Santa Maria style barbecue and what it is and on and on. Of course, I told them that you're lucky they got me because I'm one of the better barbecuers in town. So invariably, they would get around to saying, well, who's this Ike Seamus guy? Back from, I got a call from the New York Post, I got a call from the Firestone Brewery down here in the, on the way to Santa Barbara. I got a call from another place in Washington DC, a call from Bizarre Foods, a bald-headed guy that eats bugs and goes all over the world. They did a show there in, in the Elks cookroom. And everybody had to talk to Ike Seamus. How they heard his name way back in New York, I have no idea, but, but he, he was known nationwide.
And not, you know, he did so much for the community and I know he was the head of the Pioneer Picnic for years and years until he could no longer do it. But he did so much in our community and was such a giving person, such a wonderful man. December 16, I was at Edwards Gym at the hoop shoot competition that the Elks put on. Again, we're talking about kids. December 17, I went to the LCAP Collaboration Steering Committee meeting and that's at the Santa Maria Bonita School District Office. And I think that is it. Any other comments from the dais? If not, this concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here.